All right, in chapter 13, we've been reading about the beast from the sea. Sea beast. I'm gonna keep that term. And the earth beast. We are making our way through 16. So, but I am going to go ahead and read again 11 through 18, just once again maintaining our context here. Then I saw another beast coming up out of the earth, and he had two horns like a lamb, and he spoke as a dragon. He exercises all the authority of the first beast in his presence, and he makes the earth and those who dwell in it to worship the first beast, whose fatal wound was healed. He performs great signs so that he even makes fire come down out of heaven to the earth in the presence of men. And he deceives those who dwell on the earth because of the signs which it was given him to perform in the presence of the beast, telling those who dwell on the earth to make an image to the beast, who had the wound of the sword and has come to life. And it was given to him to give breath to the image of the beast, so that the image of the beast would even speak and cause as many as do not worship the image of the beast to be killed. And he causes all the small and the great, and the rich and the poor, and the free men and the slaves to be given a mark on their right hand or on their forehead. And he provides that no one will be able to buy or to sell except the one who has the mark, either the name of the beast or the number of his name. Here is wisdom. Let him who has understanding calculate the number of the beast, for the number is that of a man, and his number is 666. All right, so last time, where we left off was reading from Exodus 13 and Deuteronomy. So, let's go to Exodus 13 again. So this is all keeping in line with the unholy trinity part of this, that really a lot of what we're reading is a unholy parody of the things that God has already instituted. So, "And it shall serve as a sign to you on your hand and as a reminder on your forehead that the law of Yahweh may be in your mouth, for with a powerful hand Yahweh brought you out of Egypt." So just that language alone, what you will see as you read that in context, that was chapter 13 of Exodus, verse 9, that what he's talking about there is not even like marking your hand or your forehead or writing something. It was keeping the feast of unleavened bread of Passover. That was it. So, once again, while we're talking about people, we're talking about systems. And that's exactly what we are looking at here, is the evidence of loyalty and allegiance. That's what this boils down to. Every bit of this. Loyalty and allegiance, right? And you could look at Matthew Bates and some of his writing. Goodness, I just went blank on that book. Thanks, Melody. Oh my goodness. It's on my shelf in there. All right. Gospel allegiance. Oh, thank you. Thank you very much. Phew, man. So, but all of that is really, and the whole idea is that when we talk about faith alone, it's faithfulness. Like that's really the Greek word that we are talking about, is instead of just faith as this abstract idea, or you have, you give mental assent to an idea. No, no, no. What you've accepted is, "I have devoted myself to living, to following Jesus." That is the saving loyalty, saving allegiance. That's what all of this is about. Because we can't say, "Oh, yeah, I love the Lord," and go and live for the devil. Like that doesn't work. Now, we're not preaching perfectionism or anything like that. But there is a clear motivation of who are our loyalties? Who is our allegiance to? Is it to ourselves? Which that kind of falls into the category of the world, right? Or is it to Yahweh? Is it to following Jesus, His Son? So that is what's communicated here from what we see in Exodus 13, is that this is an honoring, a remembering of what Yahweh had done in freeing his people from Egypt, and celebrating that, commemorating that from year to year. Now, if we go to Deuteronomy 6, and I just want to, I know we're rehashing this, but I want to drive this home because I think this is the missing link for understanding this whole mark of the beast thing. Even understanding the whole, the number and all of that. Because, because once again, like the Torah is an anchor point for all of our understanding. For who God is, for how He works, for His systems, for His character, all of that. Even the narrative portions, it's not just in the commands. And so going forward, even to the point in Revelation, like we see a lot of this, I mean, we've already seen how much the Torah ties in to understanding a lot of the imagery of Revelation. And that's just continuing on. So, Deuteronomy, chapter 6. You know what? I'm just gonna read the Shema here. Starting at verse 3, "O Israel," here, "O Israel," sorry, verse 4. "Hear, O Israel, Yahweh is our God; Yahweh is one. You shall love Yahweh your God with all your heart and with all your soul and with all your might. These words which I am commanding you today shall be on your heart. You shall teach them diligently to your sons, and shall talk of them when you sit in your house, and when you walk by the way, and when you lie down, and when you rise up." So these words that Moses is teaching them today, it's basically Deuteronomy. It's the retelling of the law. Like as you're getting into the land, these are the commands, this is how you will live. And by doing this, you will separate yourself from all of these pagan tribes around you. It's funny how that keeps coming up, right? And verse 8, "You shall bind them as a sign on your hand, and they shall be as frontals on your forehead. You shall write them on the doorposts of your house and on your gates." There's just so much there. Actually, you know what? I'm gonna keep reading just in this chapter because what it is, it's an idea, it's a glimpse at what that system that God has created. And I think it's been a long time since we've read something like that. So let me, bear with me, please. So continuing on at verse 10. "Then it shall come about, when Yahweh your God brings you into the land which he swore to your fathers, Abraham, Isaac, and Jacob, to give you great and splendid cities which you did not build, and houses full of all good things which you did not fill, and huge cisterns which you did not dig, vineyards and olive trees which you did not plant, and you eat and are satisfied, then watch yourself, that you do not forget Yahweh who brought you from the land of Egypt out of the house of slavery. You shall fear only Yahweh your God; you shall worship Him and swear by His name. You shall not follow other gods, any of the gods of the peoples who surround you; for Yahweh your God in the midst of you is a jealous God; otherwise the anger of Yahweh your God will be kindled against you, and He will wipe you off the face of the earth. You shall not put Yahweh your God to the test, as you tested him at Massa. You should diligently keep the commandments of Yahweh your God and His testimonies and His statutes which He has commanded you. You shall do what is right and good in the sight of Yahweh, that it may be well with you, and that you may go in and possess the good land which Yahweh swore to give your fathers, by driving out all your enemies from before you as Yahweh has spoken. When your son asks you in time to come, saying, 'What do the testimonies and the statutes and the judgments mean which Yahweh our God commanded you?' Then you shall say to your son, 'We were slaves to Pharaoh in Egypt, and Yahweh brought us from Egypt with a mighty hand. Moreover Yahweh showed great and distressing signs and wonders before our eyes against Egypt, Pharaoh and all his household. He brought us out from there in order to bring us in, to give us the land which he had sworn to our fathers. So Yahweh commanded us to observe all these statutes, to fear Yahweh our God for our good always, and for our survival as it is this day. It will be righteousness for us if we are careful to observe all this commandment before Yahweh our God, just as He commanded us.'" Even just as I was reading that, I was kind of struck with a lot of the comparisons of what Yahweh did to Egypt, and really, all of the judgments that we've already read through. And how basically laying waste the earth. And all the wickedness found, you know, therein. I mean, he's setting himself up for hell. We have a blank slate going into the, this new era. And the question is, what part do we have in that? Because not all the Israelites sacrificed to Passover lamb and put on the door, on the lintels of the door. But also some Egyptians did. It was a mixed multitude that came out. And that's a whole thing. yeah, so Exodus 13, Deuteronomy 6. bears a little bit more understanding there. so from Schnabel. Thanks for not laughing whenever I say that name. So, what we have is a few different options. Did I talk about the Roman coins and everything last time? From Schnabel? I think I did. Okay, so there's a few different pieces here of ideas of what this mark could actually be. So the term mark, kragma, designates a mark that is engraved, etched, branded, cut, or imprinted on something. So the mark of the beast refers, could refer to Roman coins on which the images and names of Roman emperors were engraved. The inability to buy and sell commodities would be the result of refusing to use Roman coins. When Jesus asked for a coin, being by had a dragma, and one of the Pharisees produced that, that was actually forbidden because it had the picture of Caesar on it. Because yeah, whose inscription, whose, you know, image and inscriptions on it? Caesar's. Oh, render under Caesar what is Caesar's. Yep, no, that's the, that is like the little hidden, like, oh, gotcha moment in that whole narrative. Because, because as the Jewish people or as the Israelites going all the way back to the law, they were not to make or to have graven images. And in their minds, that was anything that had the breadth of life in it. That was how they understood that. So no animal, no person could be made in, you know, like a cast or molded or even engraving. So what you see most often on Jewish coins, and that's how you would actually know, is, you know, in the different periods of Israelite history. But in the Jewish period, post-exile, what you would see are menorahs or an olive branch or something like that. But you would never see an animal or a face. But there were periods that you do find that. And that's how you know they were either Hellenized, they were more Greek, and in charge of the money and everything else. So it's kind of interesting.
Dumb question, statues and taxidermy? All of that?
Statues, yes, absolutely. Like that was not, that was forbidden. They wouldn't make statues of people or animals. Now, ironically enough, the biggest exception that you see, the tabernacle in the temple. You had cherubim and seraphim, different things like that. So that was like an exception. So, right? And so it's really kind of interesting. Yeah. So, but as far as taxidermy, I can safely say I've never thought about that. I don't think taxidermy was, yeah, that's right. Found the limitations of my research. But I don't think taxidermy was a thing back then. I mean, or at least like,
Usually you use the whole animal, right?
Well, yeah, and that's, that's what, yeah, they would use the skins and the hides and stuff like that. That's awesome. That's fantastic. Get a gold star for that one. Ashley? So, the whole idea, so a lot of what happens, and this is kind of what lends itself to the pharisaic mindset, is you can kind of understand, there's a principle to that law, but then in the literal understanding of it, it's like, hmm, who gets to decide? You're like, well, I understand this, but just to be safe, I'm gonna go by this. Because if I do this, I'm not gonna get that far.
Okay, this is like how the Pharisees had all those extra laws that made them?
Absolutely. That's what, and you know, add a little bit of time, throw in a little, sprinkle a little bit of authority in there, and all, you know, it's like, oh, well, those guys are taking this serious, I want to do it like that. Or whenever they speak, they have this authority because they're just seeing it black and white. So that's what I'm saying is that it's really, I mean, that's where reading the Word of God, right? Reading Jesus's teachings and His understanding and commentary on the law and its application in the face of pharisaicism of that time, of the first century, oh, it's, it's just amazing. Like, I mean, it, it's mind blowing to see how like, I mean, just with a surgical knife, he just cuts right through, and then sometimes uses a chainsaw, of like, just completely separating the tradition from commandment. And saying, you know what? You guys are so far off base, this isn't even part of the argument. You know, by your traditions, you have made null and void the Word of God. That's the chainsaw moment, right? But then other times where he's like, oh, you're bringing this to my attention. Well, what about when David did this? Or, you know, and so it's just, it's masterful, it's awesome. But there is a level of reverence that goes into this. Because when make no grave an image, well, what does worship mean? Are you gonna hold up a coin and sing a song to it? Is that all worship is? Because now this is tying into a bigger picture, systems, if you will, of what does our allegiance and loyalty look like? What does worship look like? So, now, that's just one potential example of what the mark of the beast could be. Another, the mark of the beast may refer to imperial seals. And I'm not talking about the animals. Taxidermy. "So stamps called kragma," so it's the same Greek word, "were printed on deeds of sale with the name and year of the reigning emperor. There's no evidence, however, that people were stamped on their hands or foreheads." So you have the same Greek word, also the emperor's image, his, and his signature and stuff, so. So once again, you have some of the imagery as being a part of that. Ashley, did you have some? Yeah, so, so last week I had kind of that scale, right? Because at the same time as we're talking about these entities, we're talking about individuals, whether it's an individual kingdom, an individual ruler, right? An individual false prophet. But as we've pointed out over previous weeks, that we're also talking about systems. That this, instead of just one person, this is a system of worship that is directing a religious cult. And so in the case of Rome, the imperial cult that developed around the emperors. The emperors who were leading the kingdom, the empire of Rome with all of its system. So you have a little bit of like triangulation here. And that's how that works. And so we could write that out, and how that translates, but then also, oh, well, what's God's equivalent? Right? So we have God's kingdom, the kingdom of heaven, Jesus as the ruler, and then as the false prophet, for the holy equivalent of that, I think we had talked about the Holy Spirit. And what does the imperial cult equivalent look like? Well, it's us. It's us following the leading of the Holy Spirit and worshiping the Lord, obeying His commands, obeying Him and sharing the gospel and doing all those Matthew 25 things that Jesus talked about. Bringing healing to the earth, to people. Ministering to them, meeting their needs. All of those things. So, systems and people. That's kind of where we've landed by pulling all of this together. And so loyalty and allegiance just comes through in how are we living? Who are we living for? If this takes priority over the holy equivalent, right? Well, uh-oh, that's a problem. Because these will be in conflict at points. Maybe not every moment of every day, but there's gonna be points where they're gonna be in conflict. And we've already talked about with the imperial cult. If you weren't a part of that, oh, you were on the outside. And there were periods, there were points where you couldn't engage in commerce. If you didn't burn incense to Caesar and didn't receive that mark for the coming year, jail, or death, or banishment, any of those things. So, so what does that mark of the beast look like? We've already talked about money. We've talked about seals, imperial seals. Once again, having to do with commerce, going back to systems, right? Because the mark of the beast is a part of that system. And it can't be separated from that. In the same way that, you know, what is, I mean, we could just draw that line here. So we have the kingdom of God, our kingdom of heaven. Let's see. Yahweh, but then we got Revelation 5, so we'll just say Jesus. And then false prophet. Well, so we have the Holy Spirit as that individual. And then this is the system, the divine system, right? And so what does the mark equate to? Is it just obedience? Is it wearing a cross around your neck? Is it, you know, what? It's faithfulness. That's right. So, in the divine economy, right? Fourth option, the mark of the beast may refer to the, actually third, the mark of the beast may refer to the tattooing or branding of slaves, soldiers, and devotees of certain gods. Yeah, mark of the beast may refer to the tattooing or branding of slaves, soldiers, and devotees of certain gods. As an example, runaway slaves were branded on the forehead as a sign of ownership meant to prevent future attempts of escape. Devotees of Sibyl and Attis, A-T-T-I-S, were sealed by a tattoo as a sign of dedication. Barbarian peoples used tattooing as a status mark. Under Augustus, the imperial government issued tiles, tesserae in Latin, possibly inscribed, which served as proof of entitlement to the grain dole. When a person was marked off on the roll listing the names of the people who were entitled to receive grain, they probably received one of these tiles to hand in at the granery.
Same thing as debit card, huh?
There's a few of you on a roll tonight. Debit card. Oh, boy.
I guess that's what, I mean, if you look at the gangs of today, branding they do with tattooing, to show ownership, loyalty to that gang.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, boy, you got, yeah, there's a lot of those symbols. I mean, you know, I think, you know, gang culture, there might be a number of other instances. There's even religions in the world that have those same marks on the right hand or on their forehead. Just so happens to be the name of their god or prophet. Edwin Judge suggests that, moving on. Edwin Judge may suggest that we may imagine those who entered the market of Ephesus having first to make their sacrifice, and then receiving their mark in ink on wrist or forehead, just as we read in Ezekiel, chapter 9, verses 2 through 6. So let's go to Ezekiel. Ezekiel 9, 2 through 6. "Behold, six men came from the direction of the upper gate which faces north, each with his shattering weapon in his hand, and among them was a certain man clothed in linen with a writing case at his loins, and they went in and stood beside the bronze altar. Then the glory of God, of the God of Israel, went up from the cherub on which it had been to the threshold of the temple, and he called to the man clothed in linen at whose loins was the writing case. Yahweh said to him, 'Go throughout the midst of the city, even through the midst of Jerusalem, and put a mark on the foreheads of the men who sigh and groan over all the abominations which are being committed in its midst.' But to the others, he said in my hearing, 'Go through the city after him and strike; do not let your eyes have pity, and do not spare. Utterly slay old men, young men, maidens, little children, and women; but do not touch any man on whom is the mark, and you shall start from my sanctuary.'" So they started with the elders who were before the temple. So what Edwin Judge is doing is drawing that comparison, those who entered the market of Ephesus having first. So in Ephesus, in ancient, or in ancient Greece, going into Ephesus, they would have to do their offering, they would receive a mark, and then they would be able to go and either purchase the meat that was being offered on those altars, right? Because think of the local temples as being the butcher shops of the ancient world. These guys were pros. And really, like when you read the law, the Torah, and you're talking about all the animals being, you know, brought and processed, it's not like they went and bought that at the store. Like it was open-air butcher shops. They're processing it right there, sliding it down everybody, and then like, oh, this one's going on the fire, this one's going, you know, to the, straight to the market. And then like, oh, this one's going on the fire, this one's going, you know, to the, straight to the market. So, but in Ephesus, they had to have that mark after offering a sacrifice to go buy and sell. So that's a much more immediate, like, once again, kind of New Testament period. So, so one of the other things that Schnabel does say, as far as historical background, the Roman state generally did not impose economic sanctions against religious cults that it regarded with suspicion. Augustus provided the cult of ISIS in Rome with two decrees in 28 and 21 B.C., measures that are interpreted as control measures in social policy. Tiberius banished Jews and ISIS worshippers from Rome, an action that publicly demonstrated the political power of the principals, chiefs or leaders, and symbolized the restoration of order. So there's different measures that were taken at different times. While exact historical parallels do not exist, it can be readily imagined how commercial boycotts could be imposed on the followers of Jesus who refused participation in the cultural and religious life of the city. Much like what I just read with Ephesus. So, now, a good little contrast here is going to be the mark of the beast and the seal of God. Just a couple of elements from Keener. So, oh, I think I had brought this up last time. Aggreco Egyptian king had similarly required Jews to be branded with the ivy leaf, the emblem of Dionysius. And this is recorded in 3 Maccabees. This is likewise a mark of ownership, a brand or tattoo indicating to which god or empire one belongs. The term for mark is, among other things, the regular term for the imperial stamp on documents and of the image of his head on coins. And that's what I was reading from Schnabel. So like the other markings in Revelation, this one might be symbolic. Some Jewish texts speak of a symbolic mark of destruction on the forehead of the wicked. We read that from Ezekiel, in contrast to the mark of the righteous. And we'll actually talk, compare the, or contrast the mark of the beast and the seal of God here in just a little bit. And that'll come into play in chapter 15. Some interpreters have nevertheless seen a tangible expression of allegiance to the world system in at least the last two major imperial persecutions of Christians. Both in the third century, certificates were issued to those who had fulfilled the mandated right of emperor worship. But the text may simply imply a figurative slave brand identifying to whom a person belongs, God or the world. Participation in idolatry, or at least some level, appeared to be almost an economic necessity in many cities in Asia Minor. Once again, where John is writing too. And John warns that commercial discrimination would grow more severe alongside the graver danger of martyrdom. So some writers also, I think we had talked a little bit about this. So just kind of the Jewish interpretation of Deuteronomy 6, 9, 6, 8, I'm sorry, with the phylacteries. But some writers actually see that reference to the Jewish custom as part of the mark of the beast. So a little anti-Semitic, if you ask me. It's a little, it's a little bit extreme. But still, nonetheless.
Say that again, I missed.
Yeah, that doesn't make sense.
Yeah, I know. So some, some people, I wouldn't even call them scholars, actually see the phylacteries, that, so the Jewish people who would take the leather binding that has the little box, which actually has the scroll of Deuteronomy in it. And then they tie it to their forehead, so there's a box right here. So you can just look up Jewish phylacteries, and you can see those, but they pray with them. And so some of these individuals would actually see that as fulfillment of the mark of the beast. So like I said, a very anti-Semitic view of it. I do not buy into that at all. So now, once again, those phylacteries, I think we had talked about this before, were more of a like literal idea, literal fulfillment of the binding on the, you know, you shall bind these things on your arms and on your, on your hand and on your forehead, so.
Can you spell that, the phylactery? That's more the opposite, that's more the kingdom of heaven mark. Is what they were hoping.
Yeah, I'm sure anti-Semitic, that's right. So, others take the passage as an apocalyptic description of certificates issued to those who had fulfilled the ceremonial obligations. So Mount is confirming, same idea with Keener, as well as Schnabel. Still, others see a reference to the chi of Christ ceremonial, I'm sorry, of Christ's name in Greek, and suggests that the mark of the beast was a parody of the practice of making the sign of the cross on the forehead of the new Christian. So, but I don't think that practice actually happened until much, much later on with the establishment of Catholicism.
Verse 18.
Okay, so we're talking about the kind of timeframe of this.
Two different things.
So, so what we've, what I would maintain is that much like when we were talking about the four horsemen and a lot of these other things, especially as we have gotten out of the different judgments, what we are looking at is throughout the last 2,000 years, we have seen certain patterns developing all across the world in different areas, under different, in different empires. And some of these patterns fit what we see here. And this is why the word of God speaks to believers all across the world every single day. Because it's not just us waiting for this end to happen, but it's for us to be on guard against these systems every single day. And to pass that along to the next generation. Because there will be a final generation that will be going through and seeing these things. And so we, that's, I think that's why there's been a certain level of contempt towards the book of Revelation, or just fascinating, like, ooh, you know, like, but we leave it on the shelf. Like, oh, man, this is like an everyday playbook. We just need to know how to read it. Read it like John's disciples did in the first century. And I think like that's why, when we look at Rome, when we look at it through that lens, we can translate that a little bit easier into what does that look like for us today? So it's, it's a, yes, it's a, it's a both and, right? Not the either or, because we're seeing that pattern. We've seen it in Rome, and I'm sure you could go to, you know, Mao's China, right? In the revolution. You could go to the Soviet revolution. You could go into like a lot of these different systems where we've seen Christians persecuted. And look at what level of economic freedom did they have for being Christians? Oh, well, that was greatly restricted, you know, for the ones that were still alive. And so you see, you know, oh, but there's a system and there's people involved in that.
But there will be a final.
But there will be a final one, yes. Yep, and really, from what we're reading is something that will have a greater reach. Now, mind you, John did not think that Rome ruled the entire world. Parthia was alive and well and was definitely a contender. I mean, that's why Rome didn't, you know, didn't conquer Iran or India or anything like that. Like, they're in limitation, whoop, Euphrates, or even west of that. So John knew that. So at what level, like, do we read anything where it's global? Where, oh, it's the people of the earth worshiped the beast? Okay, is he talking about the entire, like, world? Or is it just this ginormous empire that covered all around the Mediterranean and North Africa and was making inroads into the barbarian lands of the north and? What, what did John, what was he envisioning? So, once again, like, I only say that because I'm more concerned about us being alert and aware to these systems that could encroach upon our lives and we wake up one day and we find ourselves completely ensnared in it. Because if you're thinking like, oh, it's the United Nations, it's the World Economic Forum. But you're blind to an American system that has ensnared us. You know, that has distracted us from following the kingdom of God, then that's a problem.
Facebook.
Facebook. The metaverse, you know, all that, that's right.
You know, what was the known universe or world at that time? They wouldn't even have known about the U.S. when this was spoken.
It depends on if you watch the late night history channel. The Egyptians were over here, that, no, I'm just kidding. Yeah, and like there, I mean, there was, yeah. I'm trying to think where to go with this one, but John was writing, you know, what he saw with the message that he had for his disciples, for the, you know, for followers of Jesus. And what he had in the concept of Rome easily fit the bill. And that's what we're talking about is like, I mean, really, a lot of the imagery that we're still to get to, it points directly to Rome. So it's a type, and this is where we get into typological prophecy, right? That's why we're going back and looking at 1 Maccabees with Antiochus Epiphanes. And Daniel seven, and it's like, oh, well, that matches up nicely. And it's like, oh, some of the things that he had instituted in Israel at that time, well, that kind of sounds a little bit similar to like what Caligula was doing, trying to set up his own image in the holy place. And then it's like, oh, well, where are we at today? And what would that look like if they did build a temple? Or is there already a temple on Temple Mount? So all kinds of fun questions, right? And so that's, that's why whether the end comes tomorrow, seven years from now, or 70 years, we need to be sensitive to the systems that we have all around us. Because, and, and let me just be very, very, very clear. The world is not passive. The systems of this world are not passive towards the kingdom of God. They're antagonistic. They are doing everything, everything they can because they belong to Satan, the prince of this world. So there is not a neutral. Just because there's not that daily attack, it doesn't mean we get to grow soft towards it. So we need to have that sensitivity so that when a leader arises and just so happens to receive a fatal wound that heals, and then there's a cult that grows up around it and says, oh, they just came back to life. We need to worship them. And then somebody's smart enough to, I don't know, make a robot, AI, that like looks just like that one. And so then they're gonna make everybody worship, you know, you could just go down a whole rabbit hole. But that whole thing, right? Oh, but it's okay because they're Republican. Oh, but wait, 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 that's something a Democrat would do. Definitely a libertarian. But like, that's the whole thing, is that we can get so wrapped up in our political perceptions that it's overshadowing our loyalty to the kingdom of God. And that's where we have to be really, really careful. And especially, here's my own like political commentary morning, right? We can edit this one out. Especially as we see our republic becoming more democratic and voting people on a popular basis. Because what we're having is a personality cult. We just need to be careful, that's what we're seeing. So, right, oh, yeah, yeah, I mean, I don't know if anybody knows this, but like 10 years ago, there was a, so there was an ongoing law of like anti-propaganda, like the government was not allowed to propagandize the public. That got repealed a couple administrations ago.
Obviously.
Obviously. So, so like that's, I mean, so there is like all kinds of other systems that are changing and evolving around us. But we need to have a level of clarity and our focus needs to be on the kingdom of heaven. Because when we are, like, when our attention is divided onto all of these other things, well, pretty soon, we would find ourselves attacking fellow brothers and sisters in Christ. But if we all prioritize the kingdom of heaven, then that brings a level of focus for us.
That's the basis of this church.
Major on the majors, minor on the minors, unity, that's right, absolutely. So, okay. All right, there we go, that's my brief political commentary. Was there any other questions as we move? Yeah, so whatever the background of the word, its significance in the present passage is to parody the sealing of the servants of God in chapter seven. As the elect are sealed upon their foreheads to escape the destruction about to fall upon the earth, so the followers of the beast are to escape his wrath against the church by bearing his mark. So remember, the evil parody, right? In the apocalyptic vision of John, the mark is obviously visible. It symbolizes unqualified allegiance to the demands of the imperial cult. In the final days of the Antichrist, it will present the ultimate test of religious loyalty. Only those who would rather die than compromise their faith will resist the mark of the Antichrist. So Mount's coming in very literal. So, and that's why, like, that's why we can't just be dogmatic of like, oh, this is figurative, this is just systems. Every time we are reading through this, like, it's systems, I mean, you could just say systems, figurative, or literal. And it's like a both and, that's what we need to be ready for and anticipate. Yeah, yeah, and I mean, you know, and that's why like branding yourself with like the name of Yahweh, or tattooing it on, you know, your hand or something like that. I don't think that is presented anywhere in view of this text as like the, oh, hey, you really want to like, you know, show the beast and, you know, hey, you're never gonna get me, like, and doing something like that, that's not in view here at all. So, and, you know, if one were to read certain passages, you know, you're not to mark or brand yourself anyways. So. So we never really, the cross takes on its own meaning through like Christian culture that developed in the centuries after Jesus and the apostles and everything else. So, you know, the- Um, so, you know, there, there's nothing in scripture that really like brings that to the forefront as a sign or anything like that. Um, I mean, really, that's. Oh, yeah, yeah. Absolutely, and really, through different periods of church history. Um, originally, it was a menorah and a fish. Uh, then that gets moved into more of the cross. Um, especially as, you know, crucifixion kind of goes out of vogue. And, um, so, and then really, the cross kind of just sticks as the institution of the church is established. Yeah, and our money still has faces on it and, you know, I mean, it's. But it says in God we trust, so we're okay. Oh, wait, is the, nevermind, nevermind, I'm not even gonna go there, not even gonna go there. So, yeah, I mean, like, so already, we're just kind of, you know, seeing some of these different systems. The question is, what are the ones that kind of like, to your point, back in the twenties are good?
Good intentions.
Good intentions today, but then, oh, wait a second, what system am I accepting? So, yeah, no, absolutely. Um, so, boy, I just need a bigger board. Um, so to this, there's a couple of books, just as we're talking about this. Um, so Salvation by Allegiance Alone, that's the one we were talking about before by Matthew Bates. There you go, and then Bearing God's Name by Carmen Imes.
Do you have these first day on your office?
First day on my office, no. I think I just had a brain fart here. B E A R or B A R? E A R, I was right, okay, all right.
B A Rs in all together, different meanings.
I know, that's what I thought, so I just went like.
I don't, I don't want to get into that.
That's right, so, okay, Salvation by Allegiance Alone, Bearing God's Name, Carmen Imes, there you go. Uh, Matthew Bates wrote the other one. So both of those really have everything to do with what we're like talking about here. It really does. Um, you know, are they gonna specifically talk about the mark of the beast or anything like that? No, they're not, but when we talk about systems, both of those things are gonna be really important to understand. So it's worth the audiobook, it's worth, you know, reading it. Um, and, and please, as you read those, you have questions, hit me up, that'd be great, so, yes.
How is the ordinary man supposed to understand all of this?
All of what? How is the ordinary person supposed to understand this? So that's a great question. Because even if we were to take a lot of the Roman context and everything else away. The disciples that John was writing to were so steeped in the Old Testament. As soon as they were talking about a mark of the beast and it being on the hand or on the forehead, they would have thought Exodus thirteen, Deuteronomy six, like just immediately. When they're talking about, you know, the beast from the sea, or, you know, the dragon and the sea beast and the earth beast, they would have thought of Daniel seven.
That's them, that's not me.
Yeah, is that an excuse?
No.
So, and I don't mean that harshly, I really don't, but like, that, that's just the Christian culture that we've grown up in. We are New Testament believers. But we've re, like, we've rejected, we've neglected the Bible of Jesus and the apostles of every author of the New Testament. And so that's absolute, I mean, it's just a part of our culture, it is.
Well, the New Testament's easy, God is love, God is mercy.
Well, and a lot of those can be taken out of context because, but each of those, everything that is written in the New Testament is anchored in the Old. Hmm, I don't know, but, but as we're talking about this, like, I mean, think about the kingdom parables. I mean, woo, Jesus is drawing some lines in those. I mean, people being sent out to the outer darkness, the whole weeping and gnashing of teeth. Kingdom system parables, right? Those are stories to give us insight to the function of the kingdom. So, I mean, we, we all have a Bible. And it's all in how we read it. It's all in the lenses that we've accepted to read it. And hopefully, like, as we're talking through this, like, I pray that the Lord is leading each and every one of you, like, in your daily study, weekly study. As you're coming across some of these things, whether it's in the New Testament or the Old, and just providing that level of revelation and clarity of just like, oh. You know, I mean, if, if everybody just read the kingdom parables this week. It was just like, oh, all of a sudden, like, understanding a little bit more about the Kingdom of God. And to realize that it's the King that's telling these stories, he's the judge. So in the same way that we're reading about a sea beast and this ruler who is going to lead to the annihilation of all these Christians. That our own King has given us insight into his own teachings and expectations of the members of his kingdom. And what a true member of his kingdom looks like and how they live. That's the part we haven't devoted a whole lot of time to. Eventually, we'll get to the Gospels, but. Hey, you know what? Listen, I have made the proposal that after Revelation, we can go back to the Old, but then we could do, you know, Old Testament, New Testament, jump, jump around, but anyways. So, yeah, I, I think like, as we're talking about this, how, how can people understand it? It's just, it's reading scripture from cover to cover. It's asking the questions, like, listen, like, I am here to serve. If you have questions about anything, like, there is no silly question, please hit me up.
And you're not too busy.
No, okay, you know, I'll get to the email whenever I can, but no, I really, like, I mean, that's really.
Go ahead and help him with the emails.
Actually, it's stuff like that that makes my day. And there's some of you that I've told that, and I am serious, that when I get Bible questions, like, man. And, you know, and I don't want to say like, like, I'm the know-it-all, I just have the resources. Like, this is my job, as some of you are working 14 to 70 hours a week on engines or whatever else. Like, this is what I do. And, and it's an honor to be able to do this and to serve and to, you know, yeah, help, like, point people in that direction, like, I'm a dealer of books, right? Like, like, I give freely, right? As I have been given, I distribute, so. And like, and that's just to build the body up. Because my hope is as disciples, we're making disciples. And that's not just from the front of this room to you guys. Oh, that's for every one of you, passing this along to kids, to grandkids, to coworkers, to friends. When, especially when somebody talks about something they saw on the news being the new mark of the beast, and you'd be like, actually, have you read Deuteronomy six, Exodus thirteen? And then all of a sudden, oh, no, I've never read that, well, let's read it together. And you're going through it, like, oh, man. Or, you know, somebody brings up Revelation, because, you know, every once in a while, there's something like that, and it's like, oh, you know what? I've heard, you know, from four or five different scholars on that one. And like, that's, yeah, that's a part of passing that information on. And we're building up the body so that really, the body doesn't get distracted. And that as Christians, as followers of Christ, we can represent Christ well and know and pray for the Holy Spirit to give us that discernment of when we need to make that stand, of knowing what compromise looks like. But also, when we need to really be active and taking care of others and loving others. I mean, you know, so it's not just this big final moment, it's every day of our lives. Well, I mean, just, just as an example, like, it's taken two hours, and if you count last week, four hours to get through one verse. Do you know what that translates into sermon-wise? It would be like, what are we talking about again?
The basics.
Yeah, oh, boy, if I, if I could say like, oh, yeah, I could boil this down into a 30-minute message. You'd be like, Luke, why aren't you doing that now? I'm thorough, okay, thorough. There you go, God wins, so. So, yeah, I mean, there's, just as we wrestle with this, as we think about it, it's definitely something, you know. We, we just need, we just need to be in the Word of God from cover to cover. So, and, and that's, and that's why, like, even as we're going through Revelation, going back to the Old Testament so much, so much. So, yeah, I mean, if you haven't read Daniel seven, I know it's been a few weeks since we did that in here. Um, but, you know, just to read that and be like, oh, each of those beasts represented a kingdom. So, you know, and the horns and a lot of the imagery, so a lot of that, a lot of that translates, so. Okay, so, uh, the mark of the beast and the seal of God. So we're gonna go back to Schnabel for this one. The mark of the beast is a parody of the seal of God that the followers of the Lamb have received, marking them as belonging to God's people. So this was in Revelation, uh, seven, I believe, yep. And also will come, came up in nine. The followers of the Lamb, many of whom are killed for their testimony to Jesus and for the Word of God, are described as people who had not worshipped the beast or its image and had not received its mark on their foreheads or their hands. So Revelation, chapter 20. So just want to go there real quick. Then I saw thrones and they sat on them and judgments, judgment was given to them. And I saw the souls of those who had been beheaded because of their testimony of Jesus and because of the Word of God. And those who had not worshipped the beast or his image and had not received the mark on their forehead and on their hand, and they came to life and reigned with Christ for a thousand years.
Are you saying it's the martyrs of that time or?
So, beheading. So if you wanted a little bit more insight of like, oh, what would happen if we didn't take the mark?
You wouldn't worry about it for very long.
That's right, so, um, so that's definitely insightful. Um, but for everybody that receives, you know, they have the seal of God. So in contrast to the Christians who are marked with a seal or have the seal of God on their foreheads. Uh, in Revelation 14:1, John states, the followers of the Lamb had his name and his father's name written on their foreheads. Revelation 14, verse one. Then we had also read from Ezekiel nine earlier about a mark being mentioned as a sign of physical protection of the righteous remnant in Israel. So the mark on the foreheads of the believers in Revelation, the seal of God, which is the name of Jesus and the Lamb and the name of the God, name of God the Father, uh, symbolic portrayal of the fact that they belong to the true and living God. Uh, so that they can be assured of the authenticity of their faith and the spiritual protection of their salvation. Furthermore, the seal and name of God encourage and empower true believers to remain loyal to Jesus Christ, even in the midst of immense political and social pressure. Some end-time specialists suggest that the mark of the beast is 666 and that in the last period of history, the world's population would be branded with this number, perhaps, uh, possibly, or in connection with credit cards. This is Schnabel, by the way, which would allow the state, uh, to control all economic transactions. Some suggest that the kind of technology that makes this possible, it's available only today, which allegedly proves that we live in the end times. This belief misses the point that social control was possible and practiced quite successfully, even in antiquity. New technology changes the way in which social control is encouraged or enforced. John speaks about realities that were already threatening his readers in the first century. The expression mark of the beast is a symbolic way of describing the state's measures that are designed to ensure that people submit to compulsory idol worship. And as Schnabel said, the state. Like, I mean, when we talk about beasts, we're talking about kingdoms, I mean. Oh, yeah, 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 sorry. The expression mark of the beast is a symbolic way of describing the state's measures that are designed to ensure that people submit to compulsory idol worship. For the record, I, I don't think so, so. Nevermind, no.
Well, some of that's our money, right? That's money we paid him for doing it back.
Listen, listen, we can't, just because it's a Ponzi scheme, we don't have to blame it as satanic. Just kidding, just kidding. Edit that, that's right, so, um, yeah, so there's all kinds of, you know, the background may be branding of slaves as a sign of being property or the branding of soldiers and devotees of particular pagan cults as a sign of being faithful followers. Christians have the seal of God on their foreheads, which means that they live under God's sovereign authority, who assures them of spiritual protection in the midst of persecution. Now, I will also say that spiritual protection does not translate into physical protection. You know, because we just read Revelation 20, verse four, where all of those with the seal of God just got beheaded. That's right, so, um, yeah, what was the last?
Seal of God.
Seal of God, ah, okay.
He went through that to, I mean, that's, I mean, to me, that's.
I think he went through that to seal us. For all who profess and believe. Yeah, it's by his blood that we're sealed. And I think you can go back to, you know, go to Revelation five for that, yep. So, okay, so next week, we will get into the actual number. So those papers that you have with the Gematria, um, bring those back. We're not gonna like, we're not gonna go through a whole list of names or any and see how they fit. We're not gonna do that. I, I don't think Taylor Swift would be on there or anything, just kidding, hey. So, all right, thank you guys for being here, God bless you, have a great week.